Good evening, Julia Schultz. You know, one of the interesting things that occurred at the now infamous April 24th meeting was the fact that the sheriff was given the opportunity to renegotiate her bid on the spot, yet Brea and Anaheim were not. Clearly, the sheriff was granted favoritism. It is my understanding that Brea was prepared to negotiate further, but apparently, three of you weren't interested in hearing what they had to offer. I have a letter dated June 15th, 2012, from Brea City Manager to our city manager, and here's part of what it states. "We place high value on our relationship with your Belinda. We also completely understand the budget situation you find yourselves in, particularly when your number-one expenditure is our police services contract you cannot completely control." Consequently, I would like to offer you a counterproposal to the sheriff's oral amendment to their proposal. Brea is prepared to continue to provide police services to your Belinda effective July 1st, 2012, that's this July, for a total annual cost of $8,908,000. We can do this by reducing patrol officers to 21 FTEs, providing free dispatch services, and by eliminating the indirect costs for all police command staff, except for the police captain assigned as your Belinda's liaison. Additionally, we are willing to negotiate other terms of our original proposal, including those related to the term of the contract and the pension liability clause. Given the urgent nature of this information, I request the council add this to the agenda tonight as an emergency measure. I'm sure it will hear it ask, "Well, why didn't Brea offer this bid in the first place?" Well, why didn't just sheriff offer her bid? That's always been the first place either. It's called negotiations. As I recall, we were already negotiating with Brea last November. Three of you decided to halt those negotiations against the staff's recommendations. So, we will never know if this would have been the price we ultimately ended up with with Brea anyway. Regardless, your argument has been, "It's all about the money." Well, not anymore, because Brea's cheaper. You've also said, "We'll get more services." Well, that's not true either, because those so-called additional services are services we already pay for and receive through the county. Brea has even stated they are willing to negotiate the terms of the pension liability clause, another of your pet peeves. By the way, though the sheriff is not a member of CalPur's pension system, they are a member of the Osiris Pension System, which has a hefty $2.7 billion deficit. In light of the fact that the sheriff is facing increasing costs because of the jail overcrowding, which is in an article in the Orange County Register, and they're expecting those costs to go on for a year, year and a half, their costs in the future are even more uncertain. In the spirit of complete disclosure and having the best interests of the citizens at heart, I fully expect you to end contract negotiations with the sheriff right now and accept Brea's latest bids. Think about it. This will begin saving us money immediately, and it will save us roughly $12.5 million over the next five years. Thank you.
Gentlemen, back here.
My name is Bill Vuklich, 41-year resident of your Belinda. Bought my house in 1970, or '71. Coached Little League Soccer, Pop Warner Football, Basketball at Friends Christian, Upward Basketball. And I also was hired on September 26th, 1970, to be a police officer for Brea to cover your Belinda. During the last 43 and 1/2 years, I've worked for Brea, and I spent the majority of my time, which Mr. Winter could tell you, in your Belinda whenever possible. I was a sergeant. I had a team that we helped build Box Canyon Park. I think Mr. Rue Makin was out there when we were building that, the first one, before it got burned down. And the only reason I bring that up is to let you know that I have some partnership with the city. I'm not just a new guy that came by and heard some things. While working for Brea, I've worked for eight different chiefs. And Chief Conklin, the current chief, is without a doubt one of the nicest, most professional young men that I've known in my life. He is a great young man, and he's a great chief. On the 24th of April at the city council meeting, I was embarrassed and sick to my stomach to see the way Anderson treated him. I thought he ambushed him and just attacked him viciously. And I think that was uncalled for and extremely unprofessional for him to talk in that manner to the chief of police. I was extremely proud that the chief maintained his composure and didn't tell him where to put the contract, because I would have told him myself. That's why I was never a politician. I thought I was very, very poor, very unprofessional. I have a lot of friends that work for the sheriff's department. There's a lot of very good young men and women that work there. I don't like the way that this whole thing has been ramrodded down our throats. As citizens of your Belinda, I think we should have the vote, not three of you who may have a political agenda that they're trying to promote so that when they retire, they might be, I don't know, the Attorney General?
Judge.
Judge, whatever that person may have in mind. I think that the citizens of your Belinda should be the ones who have that deciding vote. We voted for all of you. Matter of fact, Anderson's sign was in my front yard when he first ran for office, because I thought he was going to be a different councilperson. And I don't think that you guys really let us have a voice in what was going on. And when you did, it was, what, 3:15 in the morning, when the majority of us went home because we couldn't stay awake that late? I think it was really poor. And I'd like to see us look at that contract that Brea proposed again. Because if it's cheaper, and we're talking about money, that's the reason we're talking about going to the sheriff's department, saving money. And we could save money with the new proposal from Brea? Why would we not do that? Why would we change anything? I mean, I don't know. I also like to just bring up the fact that in my career, I never saw one of our chiefs ever be suspected of committing any kind of a crime, corruption, or lying. And I know for a fact, none of them are in prison at this time. I mean, it's just something to think about, you know? We've had honorable people. Captain Hayden's one of the best guys I know, too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Greg Schultz, 17-year resident here in your Belinda. I want to start again with my two quotes from Thomas Jefferson. I did it last time. I think it's appropriate still. "When people fear their government, there is tyranny; when the government fears their people, there is liberty. All tyranny needs to gain a foothold is for the people of good conscience to remain silent. I choose not to remain silent." America, as we all know, is a wonderful place to live. It gives its citizens inalienable rights. One of those rights, as we know, is the freedom of speech. Along with these rights are oaths of office that elected officials take. I'm going to read one of these oaths. "Ethics Reform. I promise to move forward in establishing safeguards to prevent and prohibit city council members from engaging in behavior designed to undermine or prevent our residents from participating in the political process in your Belinda, which would include initiative, referendum, and recall procedures. This came right out of the contract with your Belinda that Ms. Reichel and Mr. Schweng signed on August 28th, 2008. Nancy Reichel and Mark Schweng took this oath, and even though they are citizens, they have an ethical responsibility to their oath. Yet they are seen together around the city campaigning against the recall effort and have put out automated phone calls misrepresenting the facts and telling citizens of your Belinda not to sign the petition to put the recall on the ballot. It is troubling, to say the least, that we have a mayor and two other city council members that are resorting to name-calling citizens who disagree with them. It seems to be unethical. It appears that your word means nothing. If you are willing to break your own contract, how can we expect us to believe your word on anything else?" At Eastlake Village Board Meeting last Tuesday, it was my understanding that Mr. Schweng said he would look into getting the Police Matrix Proposals back up on the city website that had been taken down. As of yesterday, on my checking of the city website, it was not up there. This afternoon, the website seemed to be down. It was not operational as I kept trying to go online. So, I don't know if that's been reposted, but I'd like to see if Mr. Schweng could still continue with that and take care of that and make sure it's there and put up. I also still request that the Brea's bid that just came in, apparently, be put in as an emergency measure on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. I saw some other hands earlier. Yes, Mr. Gillespie.
Good evening, Greg Gillespie, long-term resident here in Belinda. As Mr. Schultz was talking about taking oaths, I too took an oath. August 17th, 1965, I took an oath to enter the military, and in that oath, I had to promise to protect the Constitution of the United States of America against all enemies, foreign or domestic, anyone that tried to misuse the Constitution of the United States. Every military man has had to take this. Mr. Schweng had to take this oath as well. I take this oath very, very seriously. There is no expiration date to that oath. We carry it to our grave. I would expect Mr. Schweng to also honor that oath. I don't think, in what was said last week, is an honoring of that oath. By denying the people to talk about the recall, did two things. I've done a lot of research in the last two weeks. It's Brown Act violation, because the Brown Act does guarantee us the right to criticize our governing agency. Mr. Schweng said, "We do not have that right." Total violation of the Brown Act. Also, we have the right to freedom of speech. Where does that go when you're told what you can and cannot talk about? That's called censorship. That's not freedom of speech. The basis for this was supposed to be on the basis of campaigning. It can only be campaigning if it's an election issue on a ballot. This is not an election issue on a ballot. It can only be campaigning if somebody is asking for some sort of action be taken. To discuss the procedure of recall is not illegal in any city in this country. I cannot find one city across this country who has ever told its citizens they cannot talk about recall. Senator Fullerton just recalled three members. I know for sure they didn't tell their people, because I sat in their audience many a night and listened to the people talking about recall. Totally, totally unethical, and I believe total violation of two laws. This should not continue. Ramifications on something like this is huge. I would advise this council not to take local advice on constitutional issues. You need a constitutional attorney. You need to start talking to them. There has been violations here. The cost of that is huge. The cost of attorney is minimal. Remember, there's no statute of limitations that have run out on the past violations of the Constitution. This thing is building bigger and bigger and bigger. Does this council as a body want our city to be placed in larger and larger liability? Just simply because our mayor does not want the public to talk about recall? What is wrong with talking about recall? Who does it harm? It's a legal process. There is nothing illegal about talking about recall, yet we were forbidden. We were told our microphone would be turned off. I didn't hear that tonight, so I guess it's, finger's not quite as itchy tonight to turn the mic off. But I fully intend on talking about recall, and if you want to turn my mic off and violate my rights, that's the way it goes. I fully will accept that responsibility myself, because I consciously are making that decision. Recall is a perfectly legal, ethical measure. It would not be part of the law if it was not. What gives any mayor the right to forbid us to talk about a legal issue? Nothing. Nothing binds you except ethics. Totally unethical to ban the people from talking about recall. Recall works. It's a measure. It is a measure of accountability. If the people are not happy with their representation, they have every right to replace them. They have every right to not be interfered. What I witnessed at the Pan House this weekend, totally, totally disrespectful to the public. As our people were gathering signatures or talking to people about gathering signatures, one of the three, Reichel, Schweng, and Anderson, would go up to that member of the public, interrupt our conversation, and wave their little paperwork in the air. Totally, totally disrespectful. That should not have to be tolerated to have that kind of government interference. We live in a free nation, not a communist nation. Don't try to treat it like a dictatorship. You are acting like dictators. Thank you.
Mr. Doty.
Thank you. Paul Doty, 31-year resident. The key word, Mr. Lipton, that you used, and I'll address this just because of your definition, were acts and omissions of the city council, either as an individual or as a body. So, my commentary kind of ties together with what several others have said before me, and that is, the means by which this council chooses to exercise their rights as citizens. Where I have a problem is when an individual of this council exercises their right, but then uses their position as a means to gain support. That I find unconscionable. Quote, this is a transcription from a robocall. The date of the call was June 11th, 2012, and I quote, and I have it on tape to back my quote. "This is Mayor Mark Schweng with an important message for the your Belinda residents. A small group of political radicals is trying to recall Councilman John Anderson. They are using deceitful lies and misleading information to try and get you to sign a recall petition. Don't be fooled. John Anderson is a strong fiscal conservative. Don't sign any recall petition. Thank you for your continued support. If I can help you and your family in any way, please feel free to contact me." The California Constitution guarantees every citizen the right to participate in government. We are exercising our right to distribute and request support for a petition, not the recall. This is not the reelection. This is a petition. Therefore, I have now received robocalls similar to and inclusive of that statement from Nancy Reichel and from John Anderson. I personally have all of my phones blocked with "do not call" and "do not disturb." Somehow, your calls from the three of you have come through anyway. I prefer not to hear them, however, I will record them and I will repeat them back in public, because I feel that the use of the term "Mayor Mark Schweng," and "if I can help you and your family in any way, don't sign the petition." That, to me, is very borderline as far as legalities. I will look it up. I've already mailed it off to FPPC, so I'm curious to see how they come back. I have presented that, plus, back on, excuse me for the date, June 7th, I supplied a letter to Mr. Lipton, which he acknowledged receipt of tonight. 19 days later, or, excuse me, 12 days later, he acknowledged it. That is the first acknowledgement of the first letter. Prior to that, I have sent emails, of which I have had two responses since April 24th, two individual responses on private emails, not on city government emails. And the funny part of that is, if you as a council are not going to respond to us privately, in writing, or by email, we have no other option but to bring it to the public. And that's my stand, and that's my stand as a citizen. I just want it out in the open. I would prefer to have an open town hall meeting. Let's get all of this out on the table. We now have a new letter from Brea suggesting that, had they been given an opportunity to negotiate at a meeting that was called with a specific agenda item to review, to review existing posted proposals, not to negotiate. I'm sorry. You as a council did not have that right. It was not on your agenda. It was not part of what that meeting was called for, let alone the fact that it stretched on to 3:15, 3:30 in the morning. You basically alienated 70% of your audience by letting it go that long, rather than take those three proposals for what they were, call a meeting the next week, and allow the public the same amount of time that you gave those three agencies to present their proposals. That's all we're asking, is fairness. Listen to the people, listen to your consultants, for which you paid heavily, and make decisions at the time you're required to make the decision, not before. Prior to April 24th, we received robocalls saying, "Mark Schweng, John Anderson, and Nancy Reichel support the sheriffs." How can you do that? I will pull the records. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is about the third time that statement's been made, and it is one of the many untruths that are being said by Mr. Doty and others. I have that same robocall. I believe I indicated earlier. I was surprised to receive it as well. The robocall talks about supporting the competitive bidding process, which the three of us did and two of us didn't, and most of you opposed from the very beginning and threatened a recall from that point forward. I made a robocall, and I noticed you left out the fact that you also forwarded that and you're asking the ACLU to get involved with you, so you probably should be fully transparent while you're up there. I made a robocall about the, I don't know what else to call it, when for two weeks after being told that there was no jail by Lieutenant Wren himself, that your group continued to tell people that there was going to be a jail built by the sheriff in your Belinda. In most people's opinion, and I'm not asking for a discussion, I'm responding with my First Amendment rights as well. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
For two weeks, that sign stayed up down there, and people were lied to. Received an email today that Mrs. Horton had approached somebody's wife at a grocery store and said the same thing. Every council member received that. So, if we're going to have a full exchange like you want to have, then we will. Today, I sent out another robocall, pointing out the new lie that's being told about a 17-minute response time to emergencies that continues to be told to emergencies, and comparing that to a 4 minute and 22 second Priority 1 time of the city of Brea and claiming 17-minute response time, when on your own website, you have the actual facts and you continue to misrepresent that. It's something the public needs to know, that what they're being told are, at best, untruths, but considering that many of the people on your side of things have been told that these are untruths, where you even have it posted where the facts themselves show it's untrue, and you continue to state something as a fact, most people would call that a lie, and it's not a good, honest debate that we're having. I will debate anyone on the facts. I will discuss any of the provisions and circumstances, but it's difficult to do. It's difficult to do when facts are being manufactured and lies are being told. And so, those are my free speech rights that likewise I get to exercise and will continue to do so. Thank you.
You've already had your five minutes, and your mic is currently off. Mr. Doty, you're not recognized.
I'm not recognized.
You're not recognized. You've had your five minutes, sir.
Mr. Swain. Okay, we take a break if this is going to continue?
Yeah, well, council will adjourn for a break. 10 minutes could be back at 8:20.
Mean Mrs. Nelson when I was teaching. Mean, mean Mrs. Nelson. I'm not a political radical. I've known a lot of you for a lot of years. I resent being called names. I'm not a union member. I'm not a thug. I'm a citizen, exercising my rights. Last time, I talked about response time, and Mr. Schweng said, "Where did I get my information?" And I've read so much, I couldn't remember the name of the document, but I have it right here. It's from the Orange County Sheriff's Department, Response Times, First Quarter 2012, by Priority at Dispatch and City. This is a whole document with a letter from somebody that we know who requested this information, which took them quite a long time to receive, and it has the times of day, the number of calls. I found it interesting that there's nearly 20% abandoned call, which means people give up. One out of five calls, they give up and don't stay on the line. And the 17 minutes, I was in error. It is 16 minutes and 23 seconds is the average. Priority 1, 2, and 3, from the time somebody dials 911 till the time an officer gets on the scene. That's the average. So, I have copies for you. So, there is that. So, not a lie, a document from the sheriff's department, so not a lie. I'm still really irritated about the contract that's being negotiated about the sheriffs. I do not like language out there from councilmembers telling people, "We hired the sheriffs," when you don't have a signed contract, so you haven't hired anybody, that you're not saving any money because nothing has been spent yet. So, you know, you want to talk about our side, lying, those are lies as well. Some questions that I have as we go into this contract thing. Apparently, there are no specific hour performance benchmarks in the contract. I'm not sure I totally understand that, but it's the guarantee of contract hours. I don't know. In my mind, it translated to feet-on-the-street kind of a thing, and it seemed too vague the last I saw that, so I need that to be really attended to by you guys watching this The Orange County Sheriff's Department, nine months ago, repurchased eight new patrol units before they had a contract with us, and so, I know Mr. Lindsey had tried to get the answer to that, but nobody seemed to have an answer for him. So, I want to know who's going to pay for these cars. And, you know, the nice thing about leasing a car is when, you know, if it gets crashed, then you just keep paying your lease payment and somebody else buys the new car. So, I don't know why we want to own cars. I don't care that much about a sticker on the door. According to Mr. Anderson, we are saving a lot more money with the sheriffs because of that island thing and the crossover. I'm not really sure I get that, because it seems to me that even though we're not paying them money, we're losing feet on the street, because they now have a bigger area to patrol. So, I don't think that's a plus for us. I don't understand why a $10 million contract is being rushed to be completed before May 1st, 2013, which is when our Brea contract actually ends, according to the 18-month thing started November 1st. Bids are not the final deal. This is not an unusual request for us to ask for another meeting to hear. You know, we all heard bids. We didn't hear final things. I know that meeting, you know, a lot of people left, but they still had questions, and a lot of people who stayed had questions, and none of these questions were answered, because you guys just listened, kind of impatiently, until we all wore out, and you could rubber-stamp this thing. But there's a lot of questions that are unanswered out there, and I think it would be politically suicidal for you to go ahead and just rubber-stamp this without getting all these questions out in the public. So, another meeting seems to be in order. As far as violating my personal rights, you know, if you think you made the best deal with this contract bid, then you should just sit there and let the process ride out. If we are wrong, we will not get signatures, we will not get on the ballot, or if we get it on the ballot, if you are so sure you're right, people will not vote for the recall. Instead, you're out there harassing people, very unseemly. And, Mr. Anderson, you step within two feet of my space again, and I will call my police department.
Mrs. Nelson, direct your comments to the council's whole place. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you so much, and I guess that will apply both ways, stepping in my space.
I sat in my chair for eight hours.
And, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you. If we could have a professional discussion, it'd be a whole lot better. Exactly. Captain, in the Brea proposal, what type of response time was noted? I don't mean, I mean, you understand the difference, and I'm sorry I'm pointing my pen at you. Priority 1, Priority 2, Priority 3, because unfortunately, we just had it repeated again up here tonight. The- The 422 number that you referenced a little while ago, that was Priority One. Priority One. Yes. That's an emergency response. We just had an example of what's going on out in the community where, well, Priority One, Two, and Three, and it's an average of 16 minutes, and by the way, Brea's 422. That's Priority One compared to Priority One, Two, and Three. Three, of course, is non-threatening, response report has to be taken and so forth. I find it hard to believe that it's out of ignorance that these types of claims are being made, but maybe it is. But I hope now that it's understood what Priority One is, that it is unfair and inaccurate, if not untruthful, if not a lie, to say that there's a 16-minute emergency response time by the sheriff when comparing it to Brea's Priority One response. That is a deception that needs to stop in this community. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Debbie Burks. I think I can clear up something. The sheriff's proposal only gave a stated goal of five minutes for a Priority One call. Brea offered an exact time. I remember that because I was comparing the two response times. So the sheriff offered no concrete proof of anything other than a stated goal. "It is incumbent upon public servants elected by the people to maintain the highest standards of ethics and to be a model of civil discourse. It's an achievable standard, and one the people of Yorba Linda expect and demand without exception or excuse. With that in mind, council members committed to ethics and honor do not overpromise, oversell, or manipulate the truth in order to achieve a desired result. Those that engage in such tactics violate the public trust. City business and policy should stand or fail on their merits. There is no need to manufacture false narratives in order to convince the public that a politician knows best. To overpromise and oversell shows a disrespect for those you serve. I agree with Mr. Anderson. The public needs to know the truth, so let's examine the facts. These flyers are being passed out in the community by the council majority, the deputies' union, and YLRR. The talking points paint a false picture. That's what happens when politicians overpromise and oversell. They must then mislead. The good thing is that Yorba Lindans are too smart and well-educated to be manipulated by embellished and exaggerated claims. In order to fake a $2 million annual savings of a potential contract with the sheriff, the authors of these flyers did not compare the actual proposal data of the sheriff to that of Brea, rather than tell the truth they misled. To manufacture a budget situation which certain members of this council claimed could only be resolved by accepting the sheriff's proposal, the council majority told the public a potential budget shortfall was two times larger than what had been estimated by our finance department. The majority oversold the full-service police station. The truth can be found in the OCSD standard contract language. I quote, "The police station will be open to the public, staffed by sheriff's employees as follows. Monday through Fridays, 8:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., Saturdays, Sundays, and all county holidays closed." Unquote. Full-service police stations operate seven days a week and do not close at 3:30 p.m. Right now, any Yorba Linda resident can walk into the Brea substation, make a report, get a copy of a report, and be helped at a public counter. After all the hype, the sheriff's station is nothing new and is exactly what we currently have with Brea. Need more evidence? Let's examine the claim that Yorba Linda will have more local authority. Don't believe that either. Sheriff's contract states, and I quote, "County and its sheriff shall retain all authority for rendition of services, standards of performance, control of personnel, and other matters incident to the performance of services by county pursuant to this agreement." How about the myth that Yorba Linda will have its own chief of police? Here's how the sheriff's department refers to that position. Quote, "The lieutenant in charge of police services." The lieutenant does not have the authority of a police chief. Again, let's look at the contract language. Quote, "During emergencies such as mutual aid situations, sheriff will attempt to leave in city the lieutenant. If sheriff determines that the lieutenant is needed elsewhere, sheriff will notify the city's manager within four hours. Sheriff will return the lieutenant to city as soon as possible once the emergency situation is under control." We all better pray that the South County doesn't have an emergency. Last November, the Association of Orange County Deputy Sheriffs began politicking with regard to the police services proposal process. That campaign operates on behalf of the council majority and is ongoing. On April 25th, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Schwang, and Ms. Reichel rolled out the red carpet and presented the deputy union with a key to the city. The AOCDS has a full-time president, full-time executive staff, and lots of money to spend. Just ask Mission Viejo. Here's an Orange County Register headline from January 2010. "Deputies Spend $105,000 in Recall Election." The money went to oppose a recall in Mission Viejo. Frequently at council meetings, the public is lectured about rumors out in the community and lies being told. It's time to stop lecturing, to stop overpromising, and overselling a decision that withers under the light of public scrutiny. It's not too late to right a wrong and reconsider your decision of April 25th. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I support the call for the emergency agenda item regarding the letter from Brea PD regarding their new contract price. Just a clarification, Ms. Reichel, you're right, you do have every opportunity to voice your opinion as a servant of Yorba Linda, but also as a public citizen, but you're violating your own contract with Yorba Linda, and that's what the humor of this whole thing is. And when you're out in public, you do not have the right, unless it's council business, to say, "Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Reichel, or Mayor Schwang."
Mrs. Horton, direct your comments to the council as a whole, not to individual council members.
Okay, you guys should never use your council titles in private matters, and this is a private matter. This is not a council member, as we've been told by Mr. Lipkin. Also, you challenged Mr. Doty to an open and public discussion. Please set up a town hall meeting. He just told me he would be there, and he would love to have the debate with Mr. Anderson. So I hope that you do actually set that up so it can be a fair and ethical debate. Is it ethical to lie? We have seen or heard many lies from the majority council in the last few weeks, and I find it very disconcerting that three would band together to protect their collective positions. Without each other, they would no longer have a stranglehold on this council, staff, and community. Without each other, they would no longer be able to promote their projects, favor their selected constituents, and would no longer have the power over their opponents or personal detractors. This is no longer a representative body, but a self-serving group of politicians who serve their own egos and political proponents. Several examples of this most recently seen are, just tonight at the diocese, but we'll get into that, a newspaper article quoted Anderson stating that "I had started a rumor regarding the proposed jail or holding cell in Yorba Linda." That is blatantly false, and I demand an apology for his misconduct as an elected official. When challenged about this, he uses my website at HortonForYL.com and the Facebook page, Yorba Linda Politics, as an example of his investigative prowess. I simply posted information sent to me from the United Citizens for Yorba Linda. This is typical Anderson style of accusing someone publicly when rebuttal is not possible.
Could we just like direct this to the whole council?
This is his style during council comments.
Because again, it appears to be to one council member.
I want an extension on my time. Thank you.
I'll give you the extension. Mrs. Reichel.
It seems like we just go from one council person to the next, called out personally and spoken to about what he supposedly did.
He called me out in a newspaper article.
Direct...yeah, direct your comments to the council as a whole. You can use individual council members, but the comments go to the council as a whole.
That's what I'm doing, sir.
All right, thank you.
Can you extend my time, please?
Extend it by 30 seconds.
Well, it's going to be longer than that. That conversation just took a minute. This is his style during council comments and now in the newspaper. Just like a bully in the playground, you have seen many examples of this tonight accusing me of starting rumors about his political aspirations and about the subject of jails, which is again, false. And I haven't been at markets for over a week, so I don't know who that person is that emailed you. Another example is our mayor joining the ranks of Reichel and Anderson blasting out robo calls warning the community of the liars that are in the community. In fact, the most amusing statement in a sick sort of way was accusing the proponents of a recall as union lovers. Seems a bit crazy to me since this majority is bringing the largest public safety union in Orange County into Yorba Linda. Sounds like a liberal council to me. And then again, we have the blue fires, the majority council members, union members, and their children are passing out door-to-door and at markets. Correction to the information, we will not have a police, full-service police station as stated by the previous speaker. The city policy states we will have to reserve 50% of our yearly budget for emergencies, not the general fund as your flyer states. Our yearly budget is about $28 million. That means we have to have about $14 million on hand. We currently have about $48 million. That's three times over our required reserve, or 342%. Once again, for clarity, we do not have a fiscal emergency, and that means we did not have to bring in the sheriffs with less service, unknown boots on the ground, and the largest controlling union into our community. The community may not be always happy with Brea, but they're definitely not happy about the sheriff's department and the culture they bring into Yorba Linda. The blue fires do not mention that all police contract proposals save Yorba Linda money. Lies by omission and a marketing campaign. Taking the lowest bidder is not always the best course of action. In this case, the best course would have been to negotiate with Brea. The flyers promised a $10 million savings over five years. That's impossible to substantiate, since the sheriff will not state a cost for service beyond the first year. In their other contracts, they review the previous year and add shortfalls onto the following-year budget. So we do not have any idea what will happen with this contract cost. This is another attempt by the union and council to mislead the public and protect the council majority. What steps will this union take to protect their own? Again, look at Mission Viejo. Lance McLean was a council member there who was accused of abusive behavior. In fact, he was fired from a job for similar reasons. The union helped Mr. McLean by spending $105,000 on an anti-recall campaign to help their favored son. This would not have to be reported by the candidates because his name was never mentioned, but it's loophole I certainly complained about when you guys pushed through your ethic ordinance and blindsided our community. It now makes sense why you guys would not budge on putting something in the ethic ordinance to protect the community from this type of dirty politicking, and it's happening right now in our community. I wonder how much they have spent so far and how much more they will spend to ensure the majority council is reelected with campaign donations from their members and anti-campaign against their opponents. This council is so much worse than any prior council in city history. You may not have liked some of their ideas, attitudes, or positions, but they never went out of their way in an all-out war against the community like you three have done. I can get up here and respond to personal attacks from members of what's left of the YLRR, but since I'm here to speak to council, I won't do that. I'll leave that up to them and to you who allow their reprehensible behavior to continue. This council has become what it has hated and worse. I encourage every citizen to exercise your right and put this recall on the ballot. Go to Eastlake, Markets, and the Pancake House. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen over here in the first row.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
There won't be any public apology from me to Mrs. Horton. I stand by what I said. Mrs. Horton started a terrible rumor in this community and spread it around five different Facebook sites and two different websites, and these are the sorts of things that we hear. Mrs. Horton, I'm surprised she didn't use the F-word in front of liar like she did as she did at the break at the last... Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm going to hold up all conversation, all speech until the audience is quiet. We will have decorum in this council chambers, or we will not have conversation.
All right. As I indicated, I'm not going to apologize for a truthful statement. I'm just not. That's not a lack of professionalism or decorum. It is the truth, and I'll stand by the truth of what I said regarding that. I don't know when it happened, but the email we all received today was addressed to all council, made that statement that Mrs. Horton was in front of grocery stores. Must have been more than a week ago, if you haven't been there, telling people still, I don't know when it occurred, but that there was going to be a jail built by the Orange County Sheriff. This sort of lie needs to stop. It needs to stop in the community, and I just can't say that anymore, that it's awful what's happening out in the community, and I certainly hope it stops. Mrs. Horton mentions tonight, there are three times over our reserves, where their own flyers say four times over the reserves. So, you know, that's inaccurate. I trust that's going to be changed immediately, and a number of other things that were mentioned as well. Yes, there was a rumor started by Mrs. Horton about some future political aspirations of me. I don't have any. I didn't even want to run for reelection this time around. We'll see what happens in the future, but specifically, she said that somehow that I was running for judge. Nothing could be further from the truth. That is just an outright fabrication. That came up, and she calls me a liar. That came up in a discussion when we actually ran together, and Mrs. Horton went and sought and received the Democrat Party nomination. She turned it back, but...
Okay, what does this have to do with anything?
Captain, escort Mrs. Horton from the chamber. I have warned the audience we'll have decorum, and she chooses to keep interrupting, you're asked to leave.
You know what? Ask Mr. Anderson to leave too, because he has no decorum.
All right.
And he's an elected official.
What happened in that discussion was I was a Republican, and I had Republican Party support. Mr. Bruckner, you also sought and received at that same meeting the party nomination. And it was only at that meeting where I said, "If I ever wanted to run for another office, I cannot, by party rules, run with an endorsed Democrat." That gets turned into somehow I said I was running for judge and so forth. That's the beginning. That's the genesis of what has been stated here over and over. Mrs. Burks, you've even said that that's the rumors in the community about me running for judge. I guarantee this community, I am not and will not ever be running for judge. So I hope that's the end of this. That's how it came up in a discussion with Mrs. Horton in 2006. It was a matter of party politics, which I could not run with her as she was an endorsed Democrat, and she actually gave the endorsement back. So that was what that story was all about.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor...oh, Nancy Stevens, 40-year resident northwest corner of Yorba Linda. Mayor Schwang, councilman, staff, public here and at home. Yes, I work on the recall committee, and I'm here to tell you, I haven't had to wave a flyer in anybody's face, very calmly sit in my chair, mind my own business, and I let them come to me. If they want to talk about it, that's fine. I listen. I say what I have to say. I try not to be derogatory. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Wren for sticking around for the rest of the comments, because I did kind of jump his case, because he and Sheriff Hutchins left the last meeting without hearing all of the comments, and I think they need to hear all of the comments. There's been a lot about the response time mentioned tonight, as well as there has been indication that I've had people say to me, it's out there on the internet, that we're seeing a lot more sheriffs around town. We don't technically have a contract. During the recess, I did speak with Lieutenant Wren after I got mad at him at one point. Wasn't too much of a lady, and he has asked that there be more sheriff coverage in town. For your information out there on the Orange County Sheriff website, you can get to their police blotter. And I just printed out the seven, because people were seeing them all over town. I saw two sheriffs card today and four sheriffs over at the State of Brothers McDonald's parking lot. We don't have a contract yet with them. I understand from what Lieutenant Wren sent to me that he has asked his staff or his deputies to be out there giving us more protection. I find that a little bit difficult. With regard to the response time, if you can find it, I don't have any idea how I found this police blotter, so don't ask me. There is a time for the call received, a time that the call is dispatched. It gives it a case number, what the incident is, and a location. So my conception of that is, the call is received via 911, they dispatch it, and then it goes from there. Obviously, it... Obviously, a traffic stop, a pedestrian check, that's immediate because that's something that the officer is doing right then in the field. But if you're interested, it's there on the internet. You can look up your own and figure it out. And it's there for all the cities. I just checked today, Brea's not listed on this, and I checked with a Brea officer today, and apparently, they don't have any unincorporated areas.
Right.
So that I was not aware of. But additionally, I concur with, Schultz is asking for this to be an emergency agenda item. I concur with Paul Dode and many of the other speakers that were, I guess I'm going to call him pro-Brea people. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, I ask you to hold your applause, please. Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Mike Cook. I'm a relative newcomer. I've only been here 22 years. You know, I've really tried to keep an open mind on this, but I have to take the mayor to task. Last week, when Mrs. Anderson got up and she started talking about response times, you told the speaker that it was less. Well, it turns out it's not less. Six minutes and 23 seconds. Was that a misstatement on your part, or was it something meant to deceive? You know, you're talking about deception to everybody here. So you told, if you want to check the tape, you can see it. The other thing that got me was Mr. Winter's comments that there are no hours in this contract. There's no accountability, unless that's changed. I don't know. Why would we go into a contract that doesn't even guarantee us police officers? Last Wednesday, I drive down McCormick every day to and from work. Last Wednesday, there was a traffic accident on McCormick between Yorbalinda and Shadburg. Placentia PD was handling the call. That's County Island. Why does Placentia PD have to handle the call? Okay? And the very last thing I want to say, I don't want to take up any more time, is one of the sitting councilmen, this currently on this council, used to sit in the maximum TV exposure seat back here, and there was a Ken Ryan council that wanted to double-deck the maybe shopping center. He got up and he said, "If you people do this, you're going to be run out of town on a rail." That's exactly what's going to happen to you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Anderson.
Sir, can I ask you a question before you leave?
I don't speak.
Oh, okay. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're the one that made the Public Records Act request? Okay. And that was a couple of months ago?
I put your record...
If we're going to have a conversation, we need to get him back in.
Okay. The name sounded familiar. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, it's two minutes after nine, and we will go to the consent calendar.